Good evening, and welcome to the Durham City County Planning and Commission Meeting on January the 12th, 2016. The members of the Durham Planning Committee have been appointed by the City Council and the Council and the County of Board of Commissioners as an advisory board to elected officials. You should know that the elected officials will have the final say on any issue before us tonight. If you wish to speak on an item tonight, please go to the podium to my left and sign up to speak. For those of you who wish to speak, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium to speak. Please speak clearly into the microphone because this session is being televised. Each side, those speaking in favor of an issue and those speaking in opposition to an item, will have 10 minutes to present for each side. The time will be divided among all persons wishing to speak. Finally, all motions are stated in affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation's for denial. Could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Busby, Ms. Freeman, Mr. Goesch, Mr. Gibbs, Mr. Harris.
Present.
Ms. Huff, Ms. Hyman.
Present.
Mr. Kitchen.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Riley, Mr. Van, Mr. Whitley.
Here.
Ms. Wenders.
Here.
We have a poll.
We have what, nine?
Nine.
Okay, I have a request for excuse absence for Commissioner Van, Commissioner Riley, and possibly Commissioner Gibbs. Could I have a motion that these people be excused?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we excuse the aforementioned members.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion to excuse Commissioner Van, Commissioner Riley, and Commissioner Gibbs, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. The next thing, do we have adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Good evening, planning commission members. Grace Smith, Durham City County Planning. We do have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. As I previously, previously notified you, the case Z-15-0023, there was a notice in error, so we're gonna have, or excuse me, an error notice, I apologize, an error notice, that we would have to remove that from the agenda tonight, and it will be considered next month, so that needs to be removed, 5A needs to be removed from the agenda. And also, case A-15-0020 needs to be moved in front of the cases beginning with A-15-0014, 00014. So it'll be, and the new order would be A through F, but F would become A.
Thank you.
If that's okay with you. And I believe Mr. Young has something he would like to speak with the board about now.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you very much. I'll be brief. It's been my great pleasure to serve as primary staff liaison to the planning department for this board for now, going on seven and a half years. But we have had some administrative changes, reorganization within the department. My focus is gonna be on the engagement efforts you heard about with the work program last year, customer service, and our administrative reviews and approvals, subdivision, and site plan reviews primarily. So, Ms. Smith will here to fore be your primary liaison. You will see me in other capacities occasionally. Ms. Smith is supported by Sarah Young, who's my colleague as assistant director. I want to thank you all so much. It's been one of the greatest pleasures and best experiences of my time here. And I'm not going anywhere, but you won't see me as frequently in this role, and I wanted to thank you, and I'll turn the proceedings over to Ms. Smith when you need staff assistance.
Well, thank you, Pat. We certainly, you will be missed, and we still may be calling on you.
As I said, I'm not going anywhere, but I'm just not gonna be in the same role, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to add one additional thing on the new business. As Ms. Smith stated when she sent the notification out about five, item five, she also included a document with reference to the guidelines for the submittal of the development plans and also the committed elements. And I'd like to speak briefly to that on the new business. Is there any objections to the adjusted agenda? If not, could I get a motion that we approve the adj, approve the agenda with the adjustments?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I have a second. All those in favor of the adjusted agenda, please raise your right hand. All those in opposed, raise your hand. Thank you. The minutes was sent out. Are there questions, concerns, corrections on the minutes that were sent out? If not, could I get a motion for approval?
Move approval.
I have a move to approve by Commissioner Busby.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Hyman's. All those in favor, let it be known by raising the right hand. All those in opposition? Thank you. Okay, as, you know, item five, public hearing for the Hope Valley Commons Business Park, if you're here for that particular item, that item will be coming up next month. So if you, if you were here to speak to that item, it will be next month. Item number six, public hearing for zoning map change requests, Straw Valley, Z-14-00033. The chair will now open this up for public hearing, and we have staff presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Amy Wolf with the planning department, presenting zoning map change case Z-14-00033, Straw Valley. This request is put forth from Scott Bednas. This is in the city's jurisdiction. The request is from the current designation of office institutional and commercial neighborhood to the designation of MUD or mixed use with a development plan. The site is 4.53 acres, and proposed uses for a mix of uses for office, residential, and commercial. The site is at 5441 New Hope Commons Drive. It has frontage along New Hope Commons Drive, Durham Chapel Hill Boulevard Service Road, and Interstate 40. It is within the MTC overlay, which is the major transportation corridor overlay, which abuts our major intersections. To the north of the site is the shopping center, to the east is a self-storage facility, south is, on the opposite side of Durham Chapel Hill Boulevard, is other commercial uses, and to the west is interstate. The site is in the suburban transit area known as Patterson Place, and it is so designated with the 2005 comprehensive plan, which showed a transit stop in this vicinity. The request does meet the criteria for a development plan and satisfy the requirements of the mixed-use district. The site will, will be vertically integrated. There's a commitment for that in the phasing plan, which I'll get to in just a moment. But it does satisfy the requirements of the mixed-use district, and it includes a development plan. The existing conditions of the site are shown on this slide. On the left-hand side of the slide is the OI District or Office Institutional, which is presently vacant. On the right-hand side of the screen is the Commercial Neighborhood District, which is currently a commercial development, and through the, approximately the center is Hoffler Lane. The proposed conditions meets the criteria for development plans. It shows the proposal for uses and other minimum commitments required. Tree coverage will be along Interstate 40. 10% tree coverage is required. There's a 100-foot buffer for the major transportation corridor overlay shown abutting Interstate 40. There's a, gonna, there's a commitment for a relocation of Hoffler Lane. There will be a mix of uses. These dots signify internal pedestrian circulation, and I'd like to go over some of the other commitments of the plan. This is your visual representation. The site is committed to a maximum of 50 residential units, which puts it at 11.55 dwelling units per acre. A total of 75,000 non-residential square feet, 25,000 being office, and a maximum of 50,000 being commercial uses. There's five access points shown. Those are committed. Impervious surface maximum at 100%, which, accounting for dedication of right-of-way, would be 4.33 acres, and tree coverage area of 10%. Graphic commitments are the location of the access points, the location of the building and parking envelope, the tree preservation area along Interstate 40, and the relocation of Hoffler Lane, which is referenced from one of the text commitments, as well as shown on the graphic. There's a number of text commitments. There was a transportation impact analysis performed with this review, and these commitments address those. At Durham Chapel Hill Boulevard and Mount Mariah Road, there's, will be an additional southbound right turn lane. There will also be improvements at Mount Mariah Road and New Hope Commons Drive, including a traffic signal and other ingress and egress improvements. I'm not gonna read them all to you. They are in the staff report for further information. There's also improvements proposed at New Hope Commons Drive and Site Access 3, which is Hoffler Lane, and pertains to the relocation of Hoffler Lane and the construction of that facility. There is a phasing plan with this request. It is a mixed-use district, and projects within a suburban transit area require a phasing plan. This plan has identified two phases. The first phase will be vertically integrated with anywhere from 1 to 50 residential units and a minimum of 1,000 square feet of non-residential development. The second phase will be anywhere from 1,000 to 25,000 square feet of office and 1,000 to 50,000 square feet of commercial. Other commitments include dedication of right-of-way along the Durham Chapel Hill Boulevard Service Road, as well as accommodations for pedestrian-accessible ramps to cross New Hope Commons Drive, and transit-related improvements that could be identified at the time of site plan. There are a number of design commitments that have been proffered with this request. Design commitments are required of non-residential projects that address the architectural style, roof lines, building materials, any distinctive features of the buildings, as well as how the building will fit into the context area. This request is designated a commercial on our future land use map. You'll see on this map, red will signify commercial designation. There is commercial proposed in this development plan and this project, and therefore this request is consistent with our future land use map. It is also consistent with the applicable policies of the comprehensive plan, as identified on this slide and in the staff report. And staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other applicable policies and ordinances, and staff's available for any questions.
Thank you. Those people that are standing in the back, there's a few seats down here. There's also seats to my left up here, if you would like to sit down and be a little bit more comfortable. I have one person sign up to speak, Dan Jewell, and...
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dan Jewell, landscape architect, president of Colter Jewell Thames. Been asked to say a few words in front of you. We've assisted the applicant, Mr. Scott Bednas, with this application. He is the owner of Straw Valley. Also with me here tonight is Jeremy Anderson with my office, who can help me with some of the technical details, since, since he did a lot of the work on the plans as well. Amy, thank you for a very good staff report. We've, those of you who've been in Durham for a while and know the history of this area, especially New Hope Commons, this property under consideration tonight was actually part of the property, same ownership that New Hope Commons was, was built upon. But the, the owners of that property at the time wisely felt that this particular tract along 15501 deserved something maybe a little, a little more special than just doing a big-box power center, which of course is what we have at New Hope Commons. It's, it's great to disturb. It creates a lot of jobs and tax base for Durham, but it may not necessarily be the best thing to see from, from 15501. So what we are proposing to do is a, committing to a vertically-integrated mixed-use development with a mix of residential, retail, and office. Keep in mind, this proposal does not include the mini-storage facility, Swedish imports, or the bicycle chain, which are directly east of here going over to Mount Mariah Road. Hopefully someday those things will be up for consideration, redevelopment is, as well, to help add to creating a better image along one of our major gateways into, into Durham. Just a few key points I'd like to, like to get across. One, Amy mentioned the roadway improvements. You know, access in and out of New Hope Commons in this site has, has been challenging, particularly if you take New Hope Commons Drive over to Mount Mariah Road. Heaven forbid you should ever try and make a left turn onto Mount Mariah from New Hope Commons or go straight across into, into go corners. Well, our, our traffic engineers have worked out a solution with NC DOT and the city traffic folks to, to make that better. We are able to actually handle the traffic now without a, a reduction in level of service at any of the interchanges by adding a, what I'll call a partial light at New Hope Commons Drive and Mount Mariah Road. It will not impede northbound traffic on Mount Mariah Road. They will continue to be able to function too. But what it will do is force and allow folks to make a right turn coming out New Hope Commons Drive. We'll be adding an additional right turn lane on Mount Mariah Road onto Chapel Hill Boulevard, and we'll also have controlled left turns. What it will do is it will prevent people from trying to make a left turn on Mount Mariah Road and, and going straight across. And as we all know, because we've been out there, there are other opportunities for getting out of Mount Mariah Road if you want to make a left and go up toward, toward Urban Road, the signalized intersection farther up. Interestingly also, if you, if you happen to look at the traffic portion of the staff report, this proposal actually creates over 2,000 fewer trips than the current zoning designation does. So we have what we think is a relatively modest proposal for mixed use, particularly the, the 50 units and only 75,000 square feet of, of non-residential. Kind of to put that in perspective, that non-residential portion is not much larger than just the Dick's Sporting Goods over at New Hope Commons in the building next to it. And rather than doing a one level, we are committing to doing multiple levels, which means that the buildings will be much smaller in scale relative to, to everything else going around out here. The, the big item, items on your agenda tonight, obviously, are conversation on the, the compact neighborhoods. And this area is already within the suburban transit area, suburban transit support district it used to be called, which contemplates that compact neighborhood coming in the future. The compact neighborhood's not there yet. It may be soon, or it may not be soon, depending on what our city council and county commissioners do when it, when it finally gets to that. But with that in mind, when we had our early conversations with the planning department, we were asked to at least think and demonstrate how we might make our proposal as compatible as possible to what is anticipated as the, the future compact neighborhood and a future compact design district type zoning. So what I'd like to say is a couple of things. One, if you're familiar with our two compact design districts in Durham, we have downtown and Ninth Street. They, they both have a core district, which is the higher-density, taller stuff, and then they have two support districts around the edges, where the intensity and the height transitions down ultimately to what's called the Support 2 District, which is intended to be next to the single-family neighborhoods that surround these with lower heights and that sort of thing. What we are proposing is very much in keeping with what we think this will end up being, which is probably the Support 1 District, because we're, we're not adjacent to a single-family residential neighborhood. We're adjacent to Interstate 40 and the service-loading backside of, of Best Buy. That's what this site is actually adjacent to, other than the, the mini-storage on the other side. So I'll take the, the compact design district around Ninth Street, which is the only one non-downtown that exists as an example. That compact design district allows maximum building heights in that Support 1 District of 60 feet. We, this proposal is limited by ordinance to 50 feet maximum height unless we request more height. We are not requesting more height, so we are actually gonna be lower than the S-1 District would, would allow once the compact design district is adopted. The minimum and maximum residential densities in the Ninth Street S-1 District is 16 to 53 units to the acre. We are proposing only 11 units to the acre. So we think we're still supportive of, of, of being in the spirit of that design district, but we are also not pushing the limits in terms of the intensity and height of the use that we are proposing. As I said, there's, there is actually no limitation on resident, non-residential flurry in the design districts, and we are proposing to impose a cap of 75,000 square feet total, again, a little bit bigger than Dick's Sporting Goods. Committing to the vertical mixed use, and one thing lest you think we're proposing to do, one big building in the middle of a sea of parking. Design commitment number four on the, on the, on our development plan, I think Amy read it, states that our buildings will be oriented around a central courtyard area, so it will be anything but a big building and a sea of parking. I hope you agree. We may be making this proposal, our proposal is compatible with the future design district intent as possible, while still having to meet the current suburban transit support district requirements and the mixed-use requirements. The last thing I want to say before I open it up for, for questions, conclude my presentation, is, is about affordable housing. Of course, we know affordable housing is, is of great interest to the council, to the citizens of Durham, and of you. I think many of you know I have probably been involved in most of the discussions about affordable housing that have come in front of you and, and the city council over the last 16 months or so. And what I will say is, we don't have a policy yet. The council is treating every project differently. So what I can commit to is, we know that the council will have some expectation of something to do with affordable housing, and we will follow their lead. We will have to have conversations with the city council about how they want to handle it, because every project they've done so far has been different. So we will start conversations with the city council soon after. Hopefully you move this item ahead to a city council agenda and ask them what they want to do. Because, as I said, as of yet, the four times we've had conversations with them, there have been four different outcomes, and I suspect we'll have a fifth different outcome on this project. So that concludes our presentation tonight. Thank you for your time, and certainly here, and happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Are there other members? Well, before that, there are some seats over here on this side if you would like to sit down. Seats on this side of the, the auditorium. There's a few seats scattered in the front down here, but there's some seats over here. Are there other members of the audience that would like to speak to this item? Do we have other members of the public that would like to speak to this item? If not, then a closer public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do I have commissioners wishing to speak? Okay, I have Linda, I have Dr. Wines, and I have Mr. Miller. Linda? Turn your mic on.
I, I'm curious where the residential is gonna be on this piece of property?
We're, we're not sure yet. As, as with any project, we've done multiple schemes on what we think it's going to look like. That's not part of your application. I may get yelled at by my Mr. Young here, but right now we anticipate that being sort of in the, the middle of the property, the residential portion.
Well, the reason that I ask is because, you know, studies show that living next to a freeway and a busy highway like 501, people are apt to get sick from particulate matter, and that's 100 yards is, is, or actually, it's, it's 100, 165 feet from...
It's relatively close, yes.
So, yeah, but i, in any case, depending on the prevailing winds, you know, you're gonna have particulates, you're right in the armpit of those two highways. And so I think it's important that the residential not be abutting the interstate in the, in 501.
Yeah, that, well, we, thank you. We're taking that under consideration. That's also one of the reasons that we decided to put our, our tree-save area along the interstate, so we could save that natural buffer, buffer. Fortunately, in the 30 years now since that section of Interstate 40 was built, the, what was once just grass is now grown up in nice pine trees and, and things like that to create a buffer. But good comments, thank you.
Commissioner Wines?
Could you, I have two...
Turn your mic on.
Two topics to discuss with you. Could you tell us about what kind of pedestrian and bicycle connections you might expect between this development and I, and, and not, New Hope Commons is currently, it would be important now, and then, how, how would people get to the rail station if it, if it is built?
I don't know. I don't know. You know, certainly, we're gonna be putting pedestrian and bicycle accommodations on our property and around the perimeter of the property. I can't recall if there's a sidewalk on the, the south side of New Hope Commons Drive, but that will certainly be a requirement of our, our site plan approval, as it always is. But yes, I've been, I've been wondering about that myself, since we've been looking at several things in this area. Several times I have tried to cross the intersection of, of Mount Mariah Road and 15501, and it is, it is a nightmare. I mean, you wait for two minutes for the signal to change for you, and then you can make it halfway across and you have to stop and go again. So I think there needs to be, as part of the strategic infrastructure, planning effort study that the, the planning department, the public works department are doing in Durham for the station area, and as you know, right now it's proposed kind of in the area of the Kroger over Patterson Place. I think one of the things that, that I hope they're looking at, or suspect are looking at, is how do you actually connect the properties on the north side of Chapel Hill Boulevard down to the, the station site? I mean, I've got some ideas, but, you know, we're, we're certainly gonna, gonna be, you know, involved with the planning department on many levels to try and figure that out.
And then the second, of course, is the affordable housing. And, you know, actually, I'm, your, what you say sounds, sounds pretty good and reasonable, but I'd like to, and certainly, I, I think that we should be able to expect out of this development, you know, a few, you know, units to be committed, so that people who work over there in Dick's Sporting Goods and Walmart, there might be a... over there in Dick's Sporting Goods and Walmart, there might be a couple of people who could live in this development and walk to work. And plus, since the current, the statistics we got about the current affordability, that, you know, there's twenty-two or twenty-four percent there, affordable rents there, so it probably wouldn't be a huge stretch, you know, at the present anyway, to, and if you could just, you know, make that commitment to keep it that way when everything else goes sky high, that, that would be greatly appreciated.
You still have a minute, twenty-five.
Okay. But what, you mentioned that there were four different, you'd had four different conversations with the council, or four different cases or something, and everything had happened, everything had been different. What, which ones specifically, what were they?
Irwin Terrace, uh...
Which has been decided, the council has made a decision on that one.
Oh, yeah, that zoning was approved back last December, no, two years ago, December of twenty fourteen, I think is what, when it was approved. Two that you didn't see, because they were land transactions easements and that sort of thing at Durham Central Park, one being the five thirty-nine Foster Project, the other one being the Morris Ridge Project, where there were, in both cases, proffers that, you have different amounts that came together at different angles, and of course, the fourth, the case you heard a month or two ago that, that we presented on Rose Walk, which is, which is a different kind of project, because it is a single-family project with a small multifamily and accessory dwelling component, which made it, let me just say, it made it easier to figure out what to do in advance on that. So in this case, since we're not sure what the council's going to be looking for, we're, we're not sure if it's going to be a, a financial contribution or, or a couple of units, and every time we've talked to the council, there's been a, a slightly different angle. That's why we say, we, we, we want to, what the council asks us to do is what we will do, and I think you can expect the council will ask us to do something, because that has been the track record.
So is the Rose Walk one already been approved?
Has not gone to council yet, no.
Okay, well, you still have another minute, if you want. You still have another minute.
That's all right.
Yeah.
I'll yield.
All right.
Tom? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan, so I'm, as I look at the, help, help me understand the, the calculation of traffic impact that results in two thousand fewer trips per day, or peak hour trips per day. That's based upon a calculation of the, of maxing out the property the way it's currently zoned, which is a combination of C-N and O-I.
That, that's correct. That is the way the transportation department does that.
And then for the purposes of your project, then maxing it out would be fifty residential units, maximum number of office square feet, maximum number of commercial square feet.
Actually, it's, it, sort of, but we are not, we are certainly not asking to max out the site. We could ask for more, it would, it would do more...
No, no, I'm talking about under your development plan, what would be the maximums in the residential, commercial, and office categories? If you were to, to max each one of those categories out, under the limitations you've imposed upon yourself in the development plan?
We are at eleven units to the acre, I believe we could go up to eighteen units to the acre, under the mixed-use zoning...
No, no, I'm not interested in the zoning, I'm interested in your development plan. Under your development plan, what's the maximum development potential of property?
With what we have proposed before you today?
What is currently proposed?
Fifty residential units and seventy-five thousand square feet of non-residential. That's it. That is the maximum.
And so when you add that together and multiply that times the factors, is that what the staff did to compare against the, the current zoning for traffic impact?
Yes. Mr. Judge can explain that better than I can, because he's a traffic engineer, but my understanding is what they do is they take our proposed square footage of each use and apply the recognized trip generation for each of those uses.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to hear from staff on that.
Bill Judge with Transportation. Because this development plan submitted a traffic impact analysis with the application, that application or, that TIA included certain land uses, which is what was assumed in the table, that, that we generated, there isn't the deviations on development plans when you submit a TIA with a development plan, you're essentially limited to those maximum trips, up to three percent additional, so, and generally, it's looking at the peak hour trips, but we basically just converted it to that hundred and three percent of what was in the, in the TIA for preparing the staff report, otherwise.
So, and your text commitments in your development plan don't require you to build, to max out your potentials in those three use categories?
That's correct.
In other words, you could have one residential unit and twenty-five thousand office and fifty thousand commercial?
That's correct.
Or even less than that?
Yes. Well, not less than one, but less, less...
Yeah, but, but less on the others.
Non-residential.
The others, the others move by square feet, and then residential units are by the unit. So, uh, this project could be, could be, it build out substantially less intense than the maximums you've imposed.
It could, yes.
But we should assume that you'll max it out for our purposes?
Yes.
And, and making that assumption, it still has a lower impact than the maximum potential of the current zone?
Yes, sir. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have any other questions? If not, yes, Commissioner Huff.
To the applicant. Out of curiosity, are you tearing down those buildings?
So, we have not committed to saving them. I know our client, one of the reasons he bought the property is he fell in love with that old, you know, the nicest buildings are actually in the back, if you've been in the Black House and the old residential stuff, I mean, and if you ever had the pleasure in the, the time it was open of going to the restaurant there, the Black House, it was, it was just wonderful. But what, what we have not committed to, though, is, even though he fell in love with those buildings and bought them, he is not sure about the structural integrity of all of them and what it might take to, to keep them. So I can go out on a limb and say, say Scott's would like to keep those buildings, it's his intent, but at the end of the day, if he starts digging in and finds that maybe changed the facades on the buildings out front, it's so prohibitively expensive, and by the way, I, I, back in the day, when I was a young guy, I used to work for the firm in Chapel Hill that designed the buildings out front, then, then he might have to take those down. So, you know, that's not a commitment, his intent is to keep the building, but if, if structural analysis and that sort of thing show that the buildings need to come down, or, or some of them, not all of them, then we want to keep that eventuality. But if you notice the committed elements, the design commitments, we're, we're committing to do a, a modernist form of architecture that is, is compatible, because that's the aesthetic that he has fallen in love with.
Well, part of my reason for asking that is because I, because again, I wonder where the residential is going to be and if it's going to be too close to the highway. Because if you keep those buildings, I'm sort of...
Yeah, those, if those buildings remain, they would not be the residential buildings.
So then you would put the residential over there in that section that's right next to the interstate?
If you look at the site, there's a lot of room around those buildings that wouldn't necessarily be right next to the interstate, so there's some flexibility.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, the chair will entertain a motion. Commissioner Bugsby?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and I would just add, it's a remarkable property, if you, if you've been there, especially given its location, I think this is a really strong plan, and I urge the commitment to continue to look at options for affordable housing as well. That said, I would move for a favorable approval of a case Z-one four zero zero three three to send forward to city council.
Second?
Motion by Commissioner Bugsby, second by Vice Chair Hymanz to move this forward with a favorable recommendation. All those in favor, please let it be known by raise of hands. All those opposed, raise hands.
It's unanimous, nine to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case will be A-one five zero 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 two zero, compact neighborhood tier policy update. It's item F, but we're receiving it first, so, and this would open a public hearing.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Hannah Jacobson with the Durham Planning Department, and as we just said, these are public hearings for a project that we've been working on in the planning department for just over a year now. This is our fourth occasion to come before the planning commission to give you an update on this project. Most recently was in November, when we presented the recommendations, as well as gave, gave you the draft reports that are, that document what those recommendations are. I have a few introductory slides, there's a lot of people in the audience, so I want to get everybody up to speed, but we'll be quick. The purpose of this project overall is to update the future land use map, looking at compact neighborhood tier boundaries and future land use designations. We're also recommending two additional policies be added to the comprehensive plan, which we'll discuss in a minute. But overall, this project is to help align our future land use plan with the recently planned Durham Orange Light Rail Transit Line. It's also to respond to land use changes, development, transportation changes that have occurred in the last ten years since the comprehensive plan was adopted in two thousand and five. It's given us a chance to engage, re-engage with the members of the community, and they've helped us to identify some issues that are, that ought to be addressed prior to any rezoning or prior to even opening day of the light rail expected in twenty twenty-five or twenty This is just one piece of a broader framework that we're working on to do station area planning around the Durham Orange Light Rail Line. In addition to our land use planning, which we're here to talk about tonight, there's also plans to, for infrastructure planning that will help to address some of those questions. One of the commissioners raised about how people will get to the transit stations, so looking at access, particularly bicycle and pedestrian access. There's also an initiative to work on affordable housing, but again, tonight, the focus is on our land use planning initiatives. And the way that we've been thinking about the land use planning is in three different steps, and we're at the very first step, which is to update the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan provides a broad-based policy direction for how growth occurs over time, and that's where we are tonight. The next step will be to update the specifics of the unified development ordinance, and the final step would be to initiate zoning map changes within these areas, and we would work very carefully with the community to tailor exactly what the requirements, what the zoning regulations would be, and to map out where the highest density land uses should be in relationship to where the areas of transition would be. Before we initiate any of the zoning map changes, we would hope to have the station area strategic infrastructure study recommendations completed, as well as strategies for affordable housing in place. And finally, I mean, after, after the zoning map changes occur, then change in development of a lot of these areas would be incremental and would really only happen through private development and over, over a significant period of time, so it will not be change overnight. We've been looking at five different areas along the Durham Orange Light Rail corridor, which we'll discuss in subsequent agenda items. Over the last year, we've had twelve neighborhood meetings in which I think roughly six hundred members of the public have attended, including many members of the planning commission. And in those meetings, the members of the public have helped us map and outline some of the boundaries that we'll discuss again in subsequent agenda items. But at the onset of the project, staff had established some guidelines for looking at compact neighborhood tier boundaries. Some of those included preserving significant environmental features, using large rights of way, like highways, as, as boundaries, preserving intact, single-family neighborhoods, avoiding university, college zoning districts, and then including large undeveloped or underutilized tracts of land. So to get to the matter of the, of A-fifteen zero 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 twenty, which are updates to the text of the comprehensive plan introducing two new policies, they, these are both issues that have been identified repeatedly, kind of through our public engagement process. The first deals with the idea of how development in these areas will transition to areas that are outside of the compact neighborhoods. So we are proposing a policy that describes how that transition may occur, where the area closest to the transit station is known as the core, and then as you move further and further away from the transit station, you decrease the development intensity and transition to single-family neighborhoods or to other sensitive environments. And these sub-districts, we're, we're proposing the policy tonight, and, but they would be mapped out in much greater detail as part of the zoning map change process. The second policy has to do with affordable housing in transit areas. The city, the city council and county commissioners have adopted a resolution on affordable housing within a half mile of future, future light rail stations. It's not been adopted as part of the comprehensive plan as, as of yet, so that is what we are proposing to do. I'm happy to take any questions on this agenda item.
Thank you. I have two people signed up to speak. Dick Hale, you speaking for or against? Dick Hale?
Probably against.
Okay. And Ed Harrison, for or against?
Probably for.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the commission, staff. I'm Dick Hales, I've been active in the Coalition for Affordable Housing in Transit recent years, and we've actively participated in many of the public meetings noted, had many opportunities to interact with the staff, we've always appreciated their professionalism and their very tough job of trying to balance lots and lots of different interests around the community in these topics. I think in recent months, we participated in a number of meetings, we've had some concerns, we spoke at a matter here on some text amendments last fall, where we thought there was an opportunity to make more specific references to affordable housing in there. In reviewing the text on these matters tonight, we thought there were a couple of opportunities missed, we would like the opportunity to talk further with staff on those. We think most of what's in the policy that Hannah described very well as making perfect sense, it's not only the right thing to do around our transit stations to promote higher density and effectiveness for the huge public investment going in, but it's also what's going on in downtown and Ninth Street and so on. We don't have a problem with that. But we are sort of looking around the edges at some of the portions of the text that talk about affordable housing. There's certainly a lot of things under discussion about more specifics, things like reserving public land for affordable housing and other things, and we'd like the chance to talk a little bit more on that. I say we will take responsibility, I talked to Scott a little bit for the meeting and just said, over the holidays and so on, we haven't had as much time, we might like to inter, interact with staff, but on behalf of the coalition, I think we would like to request a thirty-day delay on this, chance to meet with staff and perhaps bring back a few tweaks that might strengthen it further next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Harrison, Fifty-Eight Newton Drive, Durham, two seven seven oh seven. That is where I've lived for almost twenty-six years. That is where I've lived for almost 26 years. It's 500 feet inside the time limits of Chapel Hill. And as some of you know, I've been a council member there for 14 years. And I'm not representing the town formally. We do have a staff person here who's really engaged in, in this process. But I think I'm going to come in somewhere between the viewpoint of the, of the nearest residents to, in this case, the Lee Village Compact District and the position of Go Triangle, where I happen to be a board member, have been for a long time, six years. And it's to support the staff recommendation for the first of, uh, policy in your two recommended amendments for sub-districts of Design Districts, page 16. And I've been watching the process, participating in it for quite a while. Have had a lot of good conversations with Hannah. I'm very glad that she took my calls. Always a good idea to call her. And I've talked with other people about it too. And what is most appealing for someone who is seeing a half-mile-long boundary with this compact district in Chapel Hill is the potential of having a support to transition area. And that would, there are a lot of, of these districts somewhere in any of the five where this would be a good idea. And my understanding from the staff memos is this has been done in the Ninth Street District already. We don't know how it's working yet. And to read it to you, the, it's the portion of a design district intended to provide a sensitive transition for more intense development to development adjacent to the district, often residential in nature. And apparently, that could be clearer because I read it to the man who taught me planning laws and environmental manager 40 years ago. And he said, "Now, what does that mean?" And you have to step back a little bit, and what it means is that, as I understand it and talking to Hannah, is that there could be a, a community concurrence. The landowners, if they're interested in the district itself and those abutting, to tailor the intensity of development up against that boundary. And as someone who's advocating for the, this high-capacity transit system, that's what I call it. It's light rail, but it's high-capacity transit. The stations themselves will be very densely developed. If you're a Carolina non-alumnus, it will look like West Franklin Street now does with votes from people like me. And there are parts of Western, particularly where it's beginning to look like a rail station, station area, an immediate station area, the core district. And that really doesn't work well, based on my experience, particularly the last five years, next to single-family residential. Single-family residential does not appear to be a use that's going to be happening in compact districts. But having some kind of gentle transition worked out in a, in a set of layers, in the case of the Lee Farm District, the Lee, Lee Village District, when you get to the map, you'll see two north-south roads. Farrington Road, which is a fast-driving highway that I used to get places 11,000 trips a day. The one on the west is George King Road, which right now is about 80% gravel and 20% youth pavement. The character of that road will change a great deal over time, but it's the, it's the boundary beyond which the district was moved in this last change. And it took in the whole area west of George King Road, which abuts the Army Corps of Engineers Jordan Project land and abuts again a half-mile of Chapel Hill boundary. But this, this offers a lot of potential for making these districts much more palatable than they would be otherwise if a, in what we call in Chapel Hill, a form-based code were applied to the entire district with the intensity of the core put to every boundary. That's, that's really hard to envision. It was hard to envision to my old professor today. I mean, he said, "Is we talking six or eight units an acre?" And I said, "Yes, we are, probably." But that's pretty low-density compared to what you have in the central district. The 11-story building in West Franklin Street is, and Rosemary Street is 90 units an acre. And that's what, that's what happens in the core station areas. Anyway, I hope you will support this, think about it. You, your role does not go away with this, this evening. We really need your thinking about this, and I will be watching every step from Chapel Hill as we start our station area planning as well. But thanks for your service.
Thank you, Ed. Do we have other members in the audience that would like to speak to this policy update? If not, we will bring it back before the commissioners. Do I have commissioners wishing to speak? I got Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Winders, Commissioner Hyman, Commissioner Winders.
Okay, um, I, I, again, there are two things. There, I'm, uh, asked Hannah a question in, in email today, and she gave me a very nice answer. And, and I thought I understood it, and I looked at a matrix of, that shows the land use designations. This amendment, amending the plan, this overview and policy change is going to assign a land use designation to the compact districts, and all of the land within the compact districts will be designated Design District. Am I correct? Hannah?
Hannah.
And, and then the, what are, the only zone that fits, that will be consistent with that land use designation is the Design District, Compact Design or Downtown Design? Isn't that right? The, the design zones?
That is correct. I just have one quick exception to the rule, and that is the recreation and open space is also allowed within the compact neighborhood tiers.
Okay. And the station area plans, we don't expect to have completed. The land use plans for the stations that will be comparable to the Ninth Street Compact District land use plan, they will not be done for three to five years, is, is my understanding. Is that, it's not on the, how, what's the timetable for that? Where, and the sub, the sub-districts, the court, sub-areas will be done at that stage?
Correct. So as I described earlier, we have a three-step process. The first step is to update the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. The second step would be to look at some of the, to tweak some of the regulations to our existing design districts. That process is already underway in-house, and we're expecting to bring that forward to the public in late spring, early summer. And then the next step in the process is to relook at some of these areas, at, at all of these areas, work more carefully with the community, tailor some of those regulations, and apply where those sub-districts would be located on the ground. And you're right, we don't have a timeframe yet. We haven't received priorities from the city council and the county commissioners about which areas we might need to look at first. This will likely be a very staff-intensive, time-intensive process. So again, we, we don't have our, our work plan worked out that far into the future.
So what will happen when Mr. Jewell comes up and wants to develop or, or is working, presenting for somebody who wants to develop a property that is maybe zoned R20, but is in, on, the plan shows it as being Design District?
Good evening. I'm Scott Waidman from the Plan Department. So if, when, if and when this is approved, they would either, the, the property owner would have to develop under their existing zoning or would have to apply for a Design District zone, a Compact Design District.
So what, since we haven't done the standards and we won't know which is the core and which is the sub-core, the sub-district, then how can we have a rezoning? How will we know what the standards are?
And be clear, we're not, we're not, we're not hoping to have a bunch of piecemeal rezonings in these areas. And we don't really anticipate there being a whole lot of those. But that's one of the reasons why, as Hannah presented, the policies for the sub-districts, we're requesting that that be added to the comprehensive plan. So if the situation comes up where you have to consider the rezoning of one property in an area, you can use those policies to help guide your decision as to what sub-district would most be appropriate.
So people will, will ask, we, we're not going to, going to zone where the sub-districts are. We're just going to just, the developers will ask for what level of, of sub-districts they think is appropriate for their, their project.
We will, and as Ms. Jacobson said, we, it is our intention to work with, within each of these areas individually to do a, a more detailed plan and rezoning, as like what happened in Ninth Street. But we have to understand that there's
Years later.
There will be, I mean, we're, we're hoping to begin that next year if that's, um, if the, the, for one, at least one of them, if that's in the desires of the council and commissioners and the Joint City County Planning Committee. But it, it will take a while.
Okay. Okay, that, so your answers, you know, make me agree with, with, with Mr. Hales that, that maybe we should defer this while we think about it a little bit. And, but also because of the affordable housing thing. I, we, we don't have, since we don't have the program defined about what the expectations are with regard to affordable housing, it makes me nervous to make these changes to the comprehensive plan without putting the conceptual framework into the, the land use element of the comprehensive plan to support the development of the affordable housing program.
Okay, and just, Ms. Cole, as the time is running, when they're answering the questions for the commissioners, that time is not charged against them. Okay, so that's why my time and your time is different. Okay. Okay.
I agree with Commissioner Winders. In light of the, the questions and the suggestions that additional tweaks are necessary, I would like to recommend or make a motion that we table this item for 60 days.
After the discussion.
Okay.
Okay, you through?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hannah, if you could step to the mic, I just want to make sure I understand what's going on here. With regard to the item that's in, in front of us, which is F on our agenda, even though we're talking about it out of alphabetical order, this is a change, a proposed change to the text of the comprehensive plan regarding our now-refined vision about Design District planning in the future. We're not proposing to make any map changes, uh, future land use map changes as a part, as a part of the consideration of this document.
That's correct.
We have created a Downtown Design District and a Ninth Street Design District, which, which employ this idea of concentric Design District zoning categories, of core, sub-1, sub-2, and special. Ninth Street's got the pedestrian business. And so what this is doing is essentially catching the text of the comprehensive plan up to what we're doing so that it can work as a guide to what we'll do in the future if we create more Design Districts. Help me make sure I understand correctly. We are not decreeing, though, in this text change, that all Compact Neighborhood tiers, the ones that exist now and the ones we may create in the future, will necessarily become Design Districts.
That's correct.
Nor are we saying that all Design Districts necessarily have to fall with inside the boundaries of a comprehensive, of a Compact Neighborhood tier.
Hold on for just a moment. I don't think that's true.
I've evidently wandered off the edge of the page here. I do that from time to time.
After conferring with my colleagues, Design Districts need to be located within the boundaries of a Compact Neighborhood tier.
I, is that actually?
Or the Downtown tier.
Is that in the code, actually? Oh, it isn't the code? All right, oh, good, that's good to know. I'm glad I asked. So, but it's not necessary that every Compact Neighborhood tier be converted to a Design District.
Correct.
Even though that is currently kind of what we're, we're looking at.
That's the, that's the intent of
We can do it, but we don't have to do it. And currently, we have Compact Neighborhood tiers, which are not Design Districts, even though we'd like to change them. And they function because the zone, the existing zoning districts inside those are interpreted inside their tier boundaries in the UDO. And you can change the zone inside those tier boundaries, just like anything else. And we have, in fact, done that in the past. Ninth Street, it comes to mind, and I don't know whether we've done it. We did it at Ninth Street before we created the Design District. So it's important, to my way of thinking, to understand that this text change is catching, at least with regard to Part 1, is catching the comprehensive plan text up with the practice that we have developed in creating the Design Districts downtown and at Ninth Street. And then, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I appreciate that opportunity to make sure that I was understanding correctly. With regard to Part 2, I read this, and while I agree with what's being said there, I, I don't really see it as a matter of, it's, it's not a guide to development planning in Durham. It looks to me more like a work plan item, something that we should do, and I support us doing, but it really doesn't tell the development community or the planning community how they should respond to proposals to develop property. And so, and I heard Mr. Hale say that he was looking for refinements. And so, and I also heard my colleague on the commission, Ms. Hyman, say that perhaps a 60-day delay would be a good idea, a continuance, rather. So I, I agree too, especially if the Affordable Housing Coalition has specific language. They'd like the staff and the, the community, including the Planning Commission, to consider. I'd like that to be brought forward. So I'm going to support the continuance at the time Ms. Hyman makes that motion.
Commissioner Whitley?
I have a question. I have really two questions. Would this apply to all of the compact districts?
No, this is just this, this item.
Just this item? But there's no affordable housing plan for any of them? So why wouldn't it apply to all of them?
It would apply to all of them, yes, if it's adopted.
Right. And the second question I need to ask staff, have Austin Avenue, do Austin Avenue meet the criteria for a Design District?
Okay, you are, that's kind of out of order. We're not on that yet. It's coming, but we're not on it yet. That's not a matter before the floor right now.
So I have to wait. But if we make the decision to postpone it for 90 days, we'll still get to it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? If not, the chair would entertain a motion.
I'd like to motion, make a motion that we have a continuance of 60 days for item number 8150020.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
There's been motion and second that we have a continuance of A1500020 for a 60-day continuance, understanding that if we continue this item, which will apply to the other items following this, that it will continue those items also. Is that the?
Let's go ahead and do the district boundaries.
Mr. Chair, they're, each one is in a separate case. So it's really, it's up to the commission. You can, you can choose to continue all of them, put them on the same meeting, or you can dispose of them each separately.
So right now, we will dispose of them each separately, so we will continue. Okay, so understanding the motion to continue the policy update, all those in favor of continuing the policy update? Let me hear a roll call.
Mr. Gosh?
In favor?
Mr. Busby? Ms. Hyman?
Aye.
Ms. Huff? Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Kenyon?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Whitley? Ms. Winders?
Aye.
Unanimous, nine to zero.
To continue.
To continue.
Thank you. The next item is actually item
Chair Harris? Could I interject for a moment?
Yes.
I just wanted to raise this now so that it doesn't become an issue later. I work for Morningstar Law Group, they are here representing one of the cases today. It is the South Square, yeah, South Square Compact Neighborhood, and okay. So, I want to be sure to recuse myself timely when that case comes before the planning commission.
Okay, I don't have a problem, anybody on the commission have a problem with that?
So, that's on the seat.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, the next item is actually item A, Lee Village, A-one-five-zero-zero-zero-one-four.
Mr. Chair, we'd ask for a brief pause, because one of the, one of the speakers would like to load up PowerPoint presentation.
Okay.
Run.
George now, right?
It's like run.
I agree, the fact that they took Crest out.
Okay, all right, I have two items I need to take care of before we start this. First of all, Ms. Cole, Commissioner Huff did not get a signature package. Here's, okay, you can have this. Okay, the second item, we have two commissioners, Commissioner Huff and Commissioner Hyman, that needs to leave before we finish this case, so if I can get a motion that they can be re- We, we have seven, we have fifty percent. So, if I can get a motion that they can be early release.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we allow commission members-
I'm so sorry to interrupt, if you excuse these two members, we're not gonna have a quorum.
You need fifty-one percent.
Eight, eight members.
I can stand to seven fifteen, let's keep going.
Okay. Yeah.
So, when we're down one on appointments, does that still obtain? I mean, it's clearly safe to look at it, that it applies even if we're down one.
I guess this meeting. Okay, the quorum, it's a number to require, that member who asked was drawn from here.
Chair Harris? Chairman Harris, per your rules of procedure, it says the quorum shall consist of eight members. The number required for the quorum shall not be affected by vacancies.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, but Commissioner Huff has to leave, but Commissioner Hyman will be here for another thirty minutes, so we can continue.
In that case, Mr. Chairman, I move that we excuse Commission Member Huff.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be, no missing, aye? Aye. Poses? Okay. You ready? Okay, Pam Jacobs, Ms. Jacobs.
This is case A-fifteen-zero-zero-zero-one-four, the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood. For those of you who aren't familiar with the area, Lee Village is nearby the intersection of NC Highway fifty-four and Interstate forty. It's largely developed in a low-density suburban character with a, kind of a semi-rural feel to it. And despite how rural it appears today, it's near some of the most highly congested transportation corridors in the state, NC fifty-four and Farrington Road. There's also some significant natural features, including the Little Creek bottomlands in the area as well. The future land use map today shows a suburban transit area of three-hundred-and-fifty-six acres, made up of commercial office and resi- and higher-density residential land uses. The proposed compact neighborhood would be a four-hundred-and-twenty-three-acre compact neighborhood designated as design district with some recreation and open space in, inside. There are two additional sort of cleanup amendments to the future land use map that are proposed. One is for Eastwood Park, which is an established single-family neighborhood, largely built in the nineteen-sixties. It's currently designated as commercial. Through our public engagement process, we heard strong support for the neighborhood to remain as residential, so that is consistent with our proposal here. It's not a unanimous consensus among the, the neighbors, but that was the overriding sentiment at the public engagement meetings that we held. A second sort of cleanup change to the future land use map would be looking at a property that's owned by the North Carolina Botanical Garden Foundation. There's an existing conservation easement on the site, so consistent with other privately-held conservation easements, we're recommending that it be designated as recreation and open space. Looking at the boundary itself that we have developed in, along with the, according to the guidelines that we laid out at the onset of the project and in working with members of the community, we've expanded the boundary to the west of George King Road to align with the Town of Chapel Hill boundary. This will help to facilitate the Collector Street Plan, and as we've mentioned before, we'll work in the zoning stage to help to clarify kind of what the transition to that single-family neighborhood will be in Chapel Hill. The boundary does not include the village, the villas at Culp Arbor to the north, but it does use Interstate forty as the boundary to the east. It includes the Falcon Bridge Shopping Center, which is near Number Four, because of the NC fifty-four corridor study recommendations that would help to facilitate some movement from the north side of fifty-four, where the station is, to the south side of fifty-four. We have, again, we've removed the area, Eastwood Park, from the compact neighborhood boundary, and this boundary does not infringe upon the Little Creek Bottomlands property owned by the Army Corps of Engineers. There are some, we, we recognize that this is just a first step in planning for the Lee Village area. There are a number of key issues that we'll need to address as we move forward. Primary among those is extending some public utilities. This area is in, mostly in the county today, so public utilities are not present. Building sufficient transportation infrastructure to relieve the very real traffic congestion issue that's in this area. Coordinating and phasing development so that it makes sense in this kind of a greenfield setting is something kind of unique to this site. And then again, how we transition to adjacent environmentally sensitive areas and the low-density residential areas will be another issue that we'll need to pay close attention to moving forward. Finally, staff does recommend approval of this planned amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Jacobs. Gail Abraham, Abraham, are you speaking in favor or against? Okay, I have six people speaking in favor of it, I have four people speaking against it, and I have one person making comments. Okay, I give the- Okay, so, I will have, each person will have two minutes each, if you would, if you would. So, I have John Ed- Eddie, Eby, and following him, I have Jared Harris, Wendy Martin, Dan Jewell, Chris Sel- Selby.
My name is John Eady, I live at five-seven-zero-eight Crescent Drive in Chapel Hill, which is in Durham County. I am president of the Woodland Acres Homeowners Association, which is comprised of many of the residents who live in the proposed Lee Village Transit District. My homeowners association is not a member of the INC, and many of the resolutions put forward by the INC do not represent the position of myself or my neighbors. My neighborhood association has long been involved with the potential development of this area. We have participated in the last fifteen years or so in numerous public workshops and meetings, including the fifty-four I-forty corridor study, the Collector Street Plan, the Durham Orange Light Rail Transit Workshops, and most recently, the Compact Neighborhood Meetings. We believe that approval of the Compact Neighborhood Design will give some of the much-needed clarity necessary for the future development of this area and protection from the piecemeal development that is now occurring. Now, we do share some of the concerns expressed in the INC Resolution for a more inclusive, in-depth process for public involvement in planning compact neighborhoods. Having participated in the planning department's public meetings to determine the broad concepts and boundaries of the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood, we do not want to be left out of the more detailed planning. The large tracts of open area in the Lee Village District have great potential, but coordination among many developers is crucial to the success in building an exemplary transit village. Since we live in the area and have invested interest in the outcome, we want to have a mechanism for providing our input on the implementation of the design district. We like the INC's proposal of a local planning committee for each transit district, and think that this would be a good mechanism for providing neighborhood input.
Can you finish up in a minute?
I can.
Okay.
It would also allow input for other issues, such as affordable housing. But the first step is to approve the overarching guidance given at the Compact Neighborhood Amendment to the Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, the Woodland Acres Homeowners Association supports the approval of the amendment to the Comprehensive Plan for the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood, but with request from Durham City County, to Durham City County Planning, that they will develop such a mechanism for continued input from the affected property owners during the more detailed planning phases of the design district. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Harris?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jared Harris. I lived, my family lived in the Lee Village area for several years, quite a while back, and we own two houses and some land in the district. We've been getting offers to do typical single-family development on our land for thirty-five years, and we've always turned those down, because we always felt we should wait for something better than just that. And for the last fifteen years, as John was saying, we participated in a lot of planning efforts when Lee Village was not named that, when it was just a transit district, and then as it became the name Lee Village, and then as this amendment went forward. And we're very grateful to the planning department for taking on this work and for producing this amendment, which we fully support. Our concern is that during this very long planning period, these offers keep coming forward to take pieces, seven acres, five acres, ten acres, and carve them off from the district. And in fact, on the map, just above Eastwood Park, you can see a triangle that was just recently carved off from the district, hasn't even been built yet, was approved, was actually, went through the approval process with the recommendation of planning, because they were following the rules. And we see no reason why that just can't keep happening. It's gonna keep happening, we believe, until this is made into a compact neighborhood and the rules are changed. So, we think that as long as that hasn't happened, developments that don't contribute to solving the traffic problem, they don't support long-term sustainable development, they don't contribute to affordable housing. All these developments that have happened don't, are outside that. So, we think it's a se- extremely important to move forward now with a compact neighborhood designation for Lee Village to prevent this kind of bad development, which has been occurring, which has occurred right up to the boundaries of the current district and which will continue in the district if, if the commission and the city council don't rule otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Martin?
Good evening, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Wendy Martin, and I lived in Durham on Wendell Road for many years. My daughter was born there, and I love this neighborhood. I'm speaking in support of the Compact Neighborhood Designation for Lee Village. Compact neighborhoods have a much more positive impact than many people understand. High-density development neighborhoods can actually preserve green space, creeks, and wetlands better than developments of single-family homes. As it stands now, every single housing development that is approved whittles away at the diversity of compact neighborhoods and the opportunity to preserve open space and affordable housing. It is important to note that the current situation kicks the can down the road in regard to confronting and finding solutions for traffic challenges, which we've been hearing about. We need to approve compact neighborhoods now. Allowing piecemeal development means losing an important opportunity to preserve open space and for affordable housing. Finally, if we have a compact neighborhood designation, this will help with federal funding for light rail. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Dan Jewell.
Good evening again, commissioners, Dan Jewell, ten-twenty-five Gloria Avenue. I've been asked by the neighbors to come up and give a one-minute-and-fifty-five-second history lesson. Hannah's report starts at, at twenty-fifteen, mine goes back to two thousand and one, when the neighbors knew the light rail was coming. They saw uncoordinated development, whittling away around the edges, no advanced planning for infrastructure, traffic infrastructure, a, a, a good diverse range of development. They ask a group I'm involved with, Durham Area Designers, to hold a charrette and workshop. We had the neighbors there. At that time, there were actually two transit stations, one at Farrington Road, one at, at Lee Village. Had so much fun, we did it again two years later, when the other transit station was dropped, and had even more folks there. Since then, as you've heard, what these folks have done is they have been intimately actively involved in getting this adopted on the Comprehensive Plan in two thousand and five, being involved in all of the road planning efforts, literally driving where the alignment of the light rail would go and where the station would go, so it is best suited for a transit neighborhood to develop around it. And in fact, they have been so impatient with this effort to move forward so they could stop all of these low-hanging fruit developments that are coming forward that don't contribute to transit supportive development. They actually submitted a privately-led application to create the Compact Neighborhood two years ago. And the planning department said, "We're gonna work on this, no problem, go ahead and withdraw," which they did. But the time is now, because as the economy approves- But the time is now because as the economy approves and single-family developers are looking for building lots at any cost, I can guarantee you, every one of these property owners out here is getting weekly phone calls to sell their property to do quarter-and-half-acre lot subdivisions. What kind of affordable housing is that going to create? Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Chris Shelby?
Selby.
Shelby.
Chris Selby. I've lived at 138 Celeste Circle in Eastwood Park in the city of Durham for over nineteen years. And thank you for this opportunity to speak, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to express my strong support for recommendation in the Lee Village item. I think it's number three, and it's to change the future land-use map designation of Eastwood Park from commercial to residential. I enjoy living in my neighborhood. And as to the future, there are changes anticipated all around Eastwood Park, including light rail, Lee Village, and widening of NC-54. I believe that these changes offer opportunities to improve our quality of life. I ask the members of the Planning Commission respectfully to help preserve and protect the future of Eastwood Park as a residential neighborhood and recommend a residential future land-use map designation for us. Finally, even if the Commission finds fault with the other recommendations associated with the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood item, I ask that a recommendation be made for the Eastwood Park Residential Future Land Use Map Designation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Lynn Scott?
Good evening. I'm Lynn Scott. I live at 211 Celeste Circle, which is in Eastwood Park, having a Chapel Hill address, but in Durham City and County. I've lived there two, three years, so I'm a very new resident. And I just wanted to come out and speak on behalf of the neighborhood and say that we are very much in favor of staying residential. If you look at Item Six on the map, where the rectangle in the front, it's houses about fifty, and I'll say that the piece behind it, which is the triangle that was referred to, that's Chapel Creek, it is designed to be a higher density, it's one to eight. And so, you've already got started that transition circle that Hannah talked about from residential on the edges being lower and then moving up towards the center. So, I hope you'll support keeping Eastwood Park residential. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Phil Post. And Phil will begin to speak to those who are against this recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, my name's Phil Post. I have a presentation, if we can just get a call. My name is Phil Post. I live at 104 St. Andrews Place, and I've lived in Durham County in this area for thirty-eight years. My neighborhood is strongly against the encroachment and expansion of the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood to the west and to the north that severely violates the Collector Road Plan that myself and many of my neighbors spent a lot of time on. And that was, it wasn't perfect, but, but our neighborhood agreed with the representatives of Orange County, Carrow, Chapel Hill, Durham, to establish the Collector Road Plan. What, what you see on your screen now is the Collector Road Plan and the density map that was in place at the time of the Collector Road Plan. So, the high density around the station was here, and there was low density to the north. But the key element of the Collector Road Plan, and I'm glad that Mrs. Jacobs mentioned that as a planning principle when you were laying out the Compact Neighborhood, was that the, the roadways are very often used as boundaries. So, it was very well thought out when we did the, agreed on this Collector Road Plan that the Collector Roads would circumscribe on the north and, and on the west, the Compact Neighborhood. This, this happens to be the density map that was used for the Collector Road Plan, just to show you that I've accurate, and this is your current plan. And the blue areas are these expansion areas where you've sprawled across our well-thought-out Collector Road Plan. So, here's, here's what happens. Instead of these Collector Roads forming the boundaries of the Compact Neighborhood, we've now sprawled across all these Collector Roads. And the strong opposition of myself and my neighbors in Durham County, in the Oaks neighborhood, is that this is, that the Collector Road Plan needs to be altered before you would take the first step to implement this, this vast expansion of the Compact Neighborhood. Our neighborhood is not satisfied that these intensity transitions are going to protect these existing Durham County residents. So, we'd ask you to, to not allow these pink areas on the west and north to be added to this, this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Chris Hank?
Hello, I'm Chris Hanky, 101 Tweed Place, Chapel Hill. I, I live in the Oaks Villas neighborhood, which is along that west boundary that was just being discussed. So, I represent our homeowners association. We're obviously the, you know, existing neighborhood that gets impacted the most by that expansion to the west of the boundary beyond George King. Our, I can't really speak for everyone in our association, and we don't have, we're not against the Compact Neighborhood development at, in general, but many of our residents participated in early planning meetings. And the big thing we requested was some sort of visibility into what the buffer zone would look like. You know, we don't own the land, so we can't control all that. But we, we, we got no feedback on the process on how any buffer zone would get, would get defined there. And I lived in Blenheim Woods Development, which was budding a different part of the Oaks. And the developers take full advantage of impeding on any kind of buffer zone, right? And what would have been, you know, maybe fifty feet of wooded area becomes all of a sudden twenty feet. You know, and this is an area that's been in existence since 1989. You know, this area is densely wooded, you know, it's going to completely change the character. And we'd like to have the ability, I think the first gentleman articulated it well, to be involved intimately in the process of how, you know, these zones are defined, specifically in our, our concerns, how a buffer zone is defined. So, we don't get, you know, we, we know development's inevitable, inevitable. We can't fight it, but we'd like to have some control or participation in the process. And, and that's our main position and our main concern.
Thank, thank you. Debbie McCarthy?
Good evening. My name is Debbie McCarthy. For thirty years, I've lived at 4517 Trenton Road, and I've been very involved in land use and thoroughfare planning for all those years. Three preliminary points. I would like to say that the Lee Village Compact Neighborhood is not compact. Four hundred-plus acres is massive. Secondly, I'd like to say that the zoning seems awfully nebulous. As you all said earlier, no one really knows what is going to be allowed within that design district and that compact neighborhood tier. Thirdly, the densities within this Lee Village area are too intense, the impervious surface too great, and the traffic and environmental impacts too severe. We're talking about the New Hope and the Little Creeks, both of which are very significant. But I know change is coming to the Farrington Corridor, as much as I love it the way it is. I want to focus on one key factor tonight that is really a life and death issue for our neighborhood. That's the location of the Light Rail Romp, the Rail Operations and Maintenance Facility. Now's the time when the Planning Department is defining what's going to be allowable in this compact neighborhood. And updating the UDO to allow a light industrial use in the setting would help pave the way for the rezoning of a romp site within Lee Village's massive acreage. The landowners in this area, you've heard from them, they intend to sell out and leave. They would not object to a romp properly sited within the Compact Neighborhood's vast acreage, as long as it's not too close to Culp Arbor or Celeste Circle. Development intensities within the Compact Neighborhood are going to be extreme, sixty to a hundred units to the acre, seven-story buildings, impervious surface the norm, and a romp would not be out of place in the midst of all that. By focusing the development within, like the romp, within the Compact Neighborhood, there would be only one location to remediate with respect to stormwater runoff, not two, as would happen if the romp is further north on Farrington. So, there would be no residential relocations, no eminent domain lawsuits, no incompatible land use, no underground diabase dikes, no Trenton Road to rebuild, no wells to contaminate, no Creekside Elementary School to safeguard, no major transportation corridor overlay zone or sewer easements, no angry homeowners to contest rezonings. Finally, and best of all, Lee Farm Park, which is southwest Durham's remarkable, unique, eighty-six-acre oasis of woodlands and wetlands, would not be harmed. It would be spared. Current and future generations could continue to enjoy the sole refreshing benefits of its natural, historic, educational, and recreational offerings. Thank you.
Thank you. Ellen Michelson? Michelson? I can't, I can't.
Michelson, thank you. I have a visual that I could pass around, I just couldn't print it, if you don't mind. I'm Ellen Michelson. I live at 4324 Trenton Road and have been within two miles, and it's Durham County, just so you know. I've lived within two miles of the Lee Farm Village area for the past thirty years. And our street is just over the forty, on the other side of forty from where Lee Farm and the romp, the, the Lee, Compact Lee Village is. And I wanted to point out that although the Planning Department has done an incredible job, I want to thank the Commissioners, the Committee, Hannah, it just seems like we've been doing these meetings for the past twenty to thirty years, and they've done one year's worth of research, done an incredible job of getting, my understanding is twelve hundred comments that are supposed to be responded to by February. And we're sort of putting the cart before the horse. We're creating the problem before we've gotten this, it's like, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And the area at 54 and Farrington doesn't seem to be addressed by the compact density. I wanted to point out by this picture that you can't tell me the environment's not going to be affected. That picture was taken yesterday when, right at the intersection on Farrington Road. Thank you. This deer was hit, and you can't tell, I mean, there's a beautiful farm. I mean, I just happened to be going by, and there was vultures. And about two weeks ago, I had a coyote in my front yard. I mean, you've heard it all before. Some of us don't want it there. There are, on our street, which is just on the other side of forty from where this is proposed, forty is going to have to be expanded for the romp and for the light rail. I'm all for public transportation, hybrid use, bike riding, walking. But it's just not the right place. And again, we have a lot of development going where it doesn't need to be. You should take something that's already partially developed and expand it more, not trees, wildlife. The deer are being pushed out, the coyotes are being pushed out, and they have nowhere to go. And it's just not fair to the people who moved to southwest Durham because of the nature of the vicinity as it stood thirty years ago when we moved there, and we're still there. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And Gail?
Oh, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Gail Abrams at 4123 New Bern Place in Durham. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm also the Executive Director of Piedmont Wildlife Center. We are located in Lee Farm Park, which is directly on the other side of forty. I'm not so much against the compact village concept as I am about where it's placed in this location. I echo both Ms. Michelson and Ms. McCarthy's comments about wildlife and the environment. Right now, there is a, a Lee Village Compact Neighborhood as well as a romp sited in both, very, very close to each other. And with those two sightings, both the New Hope Creek and Little Creek are both being impacted by these very, very close industrial and compact neighborhoods. And I would say if Lee Village is going to happen, which I don't agree should be because of the environmental impacts, I agree with Ms. Michelson that this is not the right place to have this intensity. Put the romp inside the, the village so that only one of these environmental corridors is, is affected. Right now, Lee Farm Park, we wiped out our boardwalks and our bridges just from the, the storms that we had over Christmas time. And with the addition of a romp in that same area and Lee Village, this park is going to be even more impacted by what's happening. So, look at the mitigation of both of these locations, and let's combine them into one if you're going to make them happen. But I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have other citizens in the audience that would love to speak? If you would, come up and give us your name and address, and then sign this before you seat yourself. Now, speak first, then sign.
My name is Dottie Williford, and I live at 5103 Marcella Court in Glenview Park. And we are literally back up to the rail as it's proposed. The romp have been, I had a study done by the light rail, and they told me it was three hundred square feet or three hundred feet the size of a football field behind me so it did not impact my house. However, the bridge that I can throw a rock at from my house is going to be widened and lifted to accommodate that rail, have the rail behind me and the rock. There's no one that can tell me it doesn't impact my house. My neighborhood, I can't speak for them all, but for myself, I am so against this. I've been told that by a Realtor, I mean, it's a named project. I can't sell my house without letting them know this is going to happen. And once you break ground, it will probably drop a hundred thousand dollars. In addition, two at grade crossings on Farrington Road, I mean, the traffic, we can't go left, we can't go right. The romp is, I understand, two or three times larger than the Blue Cross Blue Shield Building. I mean, for light pollution, I can already, you know, hear a little bit of forty, but I mean, in the wintertime, all I'm going to see is the romp building. And everyone in my neighborhood, the same thing. We're pretty close. I just don't think Farrington Road is the place for it. I have three neighbors who live on Celeste Circle. They're not here, and I really don't presume to speak for them. But I do know personally that their houses have been ruined. One has taken it off the market, and their only hope is that they buy the entire neighborhood. So, I just don't agree with the ones that are saying they agree with it. They're just waiting for a big buyout. Now, if someone had bought my house, I would probably agree as well. But it just seems the ones that are for it in my neighborhood stand to gain monetarily. Everyone who wants to live there is not for it. And we're very much against it. And it just found out about it, literally, this past fall, that it was going to be our, the last route that was going to be approved. And I've been going to meetings since the fall, and that's just the way it seems to be. And we try to be heard, we've gone to all these meetings, and I just don't feel people are listening to us. But that's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Sherri Hardman. I'm president of the Oaks Three Neighborhood Association. That's also been affected particularly with the extension of the Compact Neighborhood. I think one of the things that I've seen in this whole process, it has been very dubious in terms of the communication. Now, they, Hannah Jacobs said there was a lot of outreach to the neighborhoods. I really don't think that's true. And most people, even in our neighborhood, trying to communicate what's happening, they really don't know that there's this huge neighborhood that's going in right next to them. And they don't know there's a big, right across Farrington Road, a large, you know, light industrial type of complex. So, I think once the neighbors really find out what's happening, they're going to be very upset in Durham County. And these are, you know, high-end neighborhoods with, you know, a large tax base. And they're being currently upgraded right now. Their tax bills just all came in, and they all went way up. So, I'm just thinking that there just needs to be more communication and more time for the neighbors to truly have input. Because when these meetings happen, the neighbors don't get the chance to come up and talk. Basically, this has been one of the first times that we've actually been able to say something about this. As a matter of fact, I think it's really the first time, other than just being able to hand a piece of paper to somebody and saying, "I don't think this is the right way to do it." to do it." And as far as the extension, we just saw that really a month or two ago. So I would like to see true neighborhood participation. Thank you.
Hi, my name's April Apple. I live at 5107 Marcella Court, Durham County. I thank you for the opportunity to come forward and speak to you on this issue. I am not in favor specifically of the romp. Like it's been said before, I do understand that we have to make changes, we need specifically changes to our road systems, and we do need some kind of improved system for traveling, for people who come out of Durham County to work. But this small light rail system is, I think, just a joke. It's not going to improve the road system in any way, it's not going to improve commuter transit. And I, like Dottie, I live in the same neighborhood as she does, and we're going to have this huge industrial complex right behind us, and so I'm very much against it. Again, I can't speak for everyone in my neighborhood, but I would like for you to think if it's going up in your neighborhood, behind your house, would you want it? And it is going to kill our property tax values. So I would just like to say I am against it, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay, do we have other citizens? Did she take my pen?
Motion to return the pen, Mr. Chair.
Do we have other citizens that would like to speak? If not, then we will close the public hearing and bring it back before the Commissioners realize, and we don't have the numbers to vote on it tonight, but we do, and we do appreciate you coming out, speaking and expressing your opinion about the proposed zone and change. Now...
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's a point of order. I'm sorry, may I make a point? Actually, Ms. Hough was excused, and Ms. Hyman left as, without being officially excused. So technically, you could take a vote according to the rules of procedure, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would actually like to make a motion to officially excuse Commissioner Hyman. I appreciate everyone coming tonight, but I also think it's important that we do have an official quorum before we make an important decision like this. So I'd make a motion that we do officially excuse Commissioner Hyman.
Is this a motion on the floor that we excuse Commissioner Hyman?
Second motion.
All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. The other thing, a lot of you came here to speak tonight, we still can't, we may not be able to vote, but we can at least get your input, and the minutes will be available for the other Commissioners who's not here, but I don't want to waste your time. You came here tonight to speak, and I would, well, let me hear from staff.
Excuse me, Sarah Young. Staff would request that if, because now that there is no quorum, and we cannot continue with the meeting, instead of having to redo this again at some later date, that we just cease the meeting, and with all due respect to everyone that came out, we don't want to have to do this twice. And now we're going to have to.
All right. Seemed like I have been overruled, but thank you for coming, and the next meeting date is... Yeah, we can. The next meeting date is February the 9th at 5:30. No, no. The, we can still, we have an item under new business that I would like to speak to the Commissioners about. The email that was sent out by...
Excuse me, Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Because there is no quorum, you've declared that there is no quorum, you cannot continue to transact business.
This is information, it's not...
Okay.
This is just information. Again, the memo that was sent out by Ms. Smith earlier this week, and this to discuss the guidelines for the submittal of development plans and committed elements. I hope you guys read that as a policy for the revisions of development plan and for committed elements. Yes, sir?
Just for information, earlier tonight, we passed a, and I'm glad we passed it, because I don't like the idea of holding development hostage until something comes and put in place. But the last meeting, we voted to deny a developer because of the lack of affordable housing. And I think we ought to always be consistent and to treat people fairly.
I don't understand your point.
We passed, we passed a development project unanimously, and we knew that there was not affordable housing component to it.
Okay, okay, now, I understand what you're talking about. Okay. Commissioner Windus?
My only point is that we ought to work to be consistent.
Yeah, I agree with you, and we did have a conversation.
Excuse me. Could you take your conversations in the corridor, please? Okay, Commissioner Windus?
I was just going to say that it wasn't totally inconsistent, because it was comparable to the Rosewalk case, where they also came in with more of a commitment than this one was, but he had kind of a good, a good point that, and that, that the council was doing different things for different people. So he was, but, you know, I took it to mean, and put in my comments, that my, and I think it was mentioned in the motion, that we were conditioning our approval on the fact that he said, made a commitment that there would be some contribution to the, to affordable housing in accordance with what, with the council's expectations.
Yeah, well, I just, I just wanted to be on guard so that we're consistent, I won't go make a point in the middle of the meeting, so.
All right.
But I make that point now.
Thank you. Do we have a look at next month's agenda?
Yes, so next month, you'll have the two cases where we had the error and notice that we had to move to next month, which is the Hope Valley Commons Business Park and the Associated Plan Amendment. You'll also have another case where you have a revision to a development plan, previously approved development plan. And then the Cornwallis revision case, the Plan Amendment and zoning case is actually going to come back to you next month, the revised Cornwallis case.
Plus, the ones that we didn't get to tonight?
Uh huh.
Okay.
And we'll have to re-advertise all of those cases, because they weren't opened and continued, so we'll have to start the whole advertisement proceeding over for the ones that, they're at the end. That's what we were saying, you could have voted, that was our, our preference was that you vote, you open them to continue them versus not take action, because now we have to do some rather large extensive advertisement and mailouts because of that.
Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else before us, the Chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
We're not already.
Well, I mean, we can't transact business.
Hey, Grace, have a question.